Seeing them because it's.
One moment.
Josh, you just say one moment?
Yeah, I'm uh getting this live streamed.
Okay, I'll 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 wait until I see the live stream confirmation.
We're having issues with the live stream, but I can upload this later.
Okay, all right. Well, in the essence of time, we'll we'll start then. Um, all right, everyone. Good morning and welcome to this special public hearing of Land Use Housing and Zoning Committee from Manhattan's Community Board Five. I am Aaron Ford, Chair of the Committee, and we'll be running today's meeting. For the Zoom, uh, we're going to go quickly around the room for attendance. For committee members stating your name to confirm who is on the Zoom from the committee. Um, and then we can also uh do the same for other board members who are on other committees. Nancy, go go. We're doing attendance, Nancy. Can you start?
What do you want me to do?
I I just need I need committee members and board members to to say their names.
Okay, um, I don't know if I have all the whole list, um.
No, everyone says their own name. I just wanted, I just want the zoom to be clear.
Do I just say Nancy Gasho? Is that what you want me to do? Okay.
Vice Chair of Land Use.
Uh, Nancy Gasho, Vice Chair of Land Use.
Julie Chu.
Renee Kinsella.
Okay, let's, it looks like that's um it from committee members. Um, so any other um Community Board Five members that wanna just confirm they're on?
David Segman.
Hi, David Shapiro.
Some real thing, yeah. Miles Curran is also on in the attendee section, and so is Neil, so we should promote them as well. I think Miles is a committee member. All right, it's doing that now. All right, Miles and Neil are on. All right, Nancy, if I miss anyone, if you could keep adding people who are committee members or board members, um while I keep this going here. Uh, today's meeting will include a presentation from George James, from George James and Associates on the City of Yes Housing Opportunity. After the presentation, we will take questions from the committee and other board members. Then we will take public comments. Um, depending on the, we were expecting um a good volume of public attendees, so we may limit, uh, we were planning limit public comments to two minutes. We have limited time today, so please keep your comments concise, and if you agree with a prior comment, please reference that. I ask the public attendees, please state their residential or business affiliation with the district uh by stating the cross streets uh in lieu of full addresses, please. Um, the Land Use Housing and Zoning Committee will be holding our next committee meeting on Wednesday, June twenty sixth at six P M. And we will be discussing Sidevias Housing Opportunity, and we will be planning to bring a resolution to Community Board Five. Uh, due to timing, we may need to bring our vote to the Executive Committee on Tuesday, July ninth. If comments are required for the July tenth hearing, otherwise CB five will vote on the full board meeting on Thursday, July eleventh at six P M. Um, we're hoping to get some clarity and clarify that with D C P next week. Um, given that comments were pri- previously requested by the end of August. Community Board Five does not have a August full board meeting. Um, so we would be needing to get our comments uh after the July eleventh meeting. If there are clarifying questions uh during the presentation, uh, there's gonna be a few, a few places where um George will will pause and clarify, but I I would ask that if everyone holds broader questions um until the end of the, end of the presentation. Um, but we'll see, we'll see how this goes. So I am going to throw it to George. Thank you again for joining us at this eleven A M uh special time.
I am very happy to be here. Thank you. Um, I am going to share my screen if I can. And I can. All right. Okay, I'm very happy to be here today. Um, and so I'm just gonna uh jump right into it. Um, so Housing Opportunity is an absolutely enormous zoning text change. It is one thousand three hundred and eighty-six pages of zoning text. Um, and you are being asked for your comments via this um worksheet that D C P has given out. It's an optional worksheet. You don't have to use this worksheet. Um, but you can, and it is organized by these fifteen topic areas. To help your community board, um, I prepared a memo which was only distributed um on Friday. Uh, organized by these fifteen topic areas. Um, and that memo, it's like thirty pages long. It's not designed to be read from front to back. It's designed to be used as a reference. Uh, the second page has has these um topic areas. You can click on it and you could jump right to that that topic area. Um, and you know, each section includes like a little summary considerations that board members may um consider, and then a pro and con argument for each topic area. Now, I'm not going to be reviewing this memo today. You have it. It's there. Um, if you have questions about it, I'm more than happy to answer questions on it, but you all have given me a bunch of questions, or you've you've submitted a bunch of questions, and so today I'm going to essentially do a brief overview and some things to think about on this proposal, as well as then just start going through questions um that have been submitted and um responses to them. So thematically, Housing Opportunity is really about deregulation. So a lot of that one thousand three hundred and eighty-six pages is crossing out text. Um, if passed, zoning is going to be shorter. Um, and we, you know, we have been adding to the zoning resolution for most of the time since it was first adopted in nineteen sixteen. And this is going to be about, deep, a big part of this is about deregulation. Um, so it's big one is onsite parking requirements disappear. And when the onsite parking requirements disappear or or become optional, um, the calculations, the waivers, the exceptions, the special permit permits for um, you know, lesser parking, it all disappears too. Um, the inclusionary housing program, the optional R ten housing program that get rolled up together into a single affordability program called Universal Affordability Preference, which is designed to be very similar to the existing affordable senior independent residences for seniors, heirs. Is essentially trying to converge different programs that were put in place at different times for different reasons to try to make them similar or identical. Housing Opportunity converts some special permits, which are U L E P actions, right? And U L E P actions involve city council, they involve the borough presidents, um, they involve the community boards, the city planning commission. And it changes a lot of these special permits into either CPC authorizations, or it just makes certain actions as of right. Um, CPC authorizations, they're discretionary, city planning commission actions. And you, as a community board, you get a copy of the application. You may hold a public hearing on the application. You could spit comments on the application. But the city planning commission, they don't hold a hearing on the applications. Um, they don't involve the city council, uh, and then they will just, they will make the final decision. So for example, um, City of Yes for Housing Opportunity eliminates these twenty-one city planning commission and B S A special permits. They're just gone. They're just crossed out. That's that's deregulation. Um, and so it's a concept that that if we deregulate, development will be easier and markets will respond by building more housing. And more housing will ultimately lower housing costs. So what does it say? The the E I S says that um Housing Opportunity will create between fifty-nine thousand and a hundred and nine thousand units of housing citywide. That's the increment. So there'll be growth, and then these changes would create about that many housing units. Um, it assumes that about twenty thousands of those would be affordable or rent regulated. Um, it also estimates an unmet need of about a half a million units of housing. Um, but you know, in my humble opinion, this does not fully capture the impact of the changes that are being proposed. For example, I want to talk about campus infill. Um, this is topic nine. And this honestly could be really truly revolutionary if it's passed the way it's proposed. So what we're seeing here is a big housing project in East Harlem. This is Washington Houses, goes from ninety-seventh Street to one hundred and fourth Street between Second Avenue and Third Avenue. And for much of the twentieth century, through urban renewal, we've created these enormous, enormous housing estates throughout much of the city, um, not so much in your community district, but in many of the others. Leafy campuses, walkways, playgrounds, surface parking lots. You have places in Manhattan that have surface parking lots, and most of them are on these campuses. And that gives us campuses this really suburban feel. And current zoning makes infilling these spaces very difficult or impossible. If you're going to infill this campus, you would have a gigantic building on this corner and maybe a gigantic building here, but ultimately would leave most of the rest of the campus undeveloped because open space is a requirement. It's part of the zoning requirement. So City of Yes for Housing Opportunity changes all the zoning rules and allows easy infill on these campuses. Uh, it changes the zoning rules for infilling these campuses. Um, so Washington Houses currently has about one thousand four hundred and fifty units of housing. Full buildout under the rules, the the City of Housing Opportunity uh rules would be about forty-five hundred units. Um, all of this could happen on the open spaces with no demolition or displacement of units. There'd be a couple of the small community facility buildings that would go. But you wouldn't have to change any apartments to do this. And it adds this level of capacity in many, many places. It's it could be transformational if it is passed as it's proposed. But you know, the the other side of this is one of the ways it does um, this is by permitting dramatic changes um is by reducing the basic residential development standards. So for example, Housing Opportunity reduces rear yards from thirty feet to twenty feet. It reduces the size of courts that we need for legal windows from twelve hundred feet to eight hundred feet. Reduces side yards from eight feet to five feet. Reduces space needed for legal windows for light and air for habitable rooms from thirty feet to twenty feet. Reduces distances, distance between buildings on the same zoning lot from sixty feet to forty feet. Increases the maximum lot coverage from seventy to eighty percent for interior and through lot. Uh, makes residential open space optional, so that infill that's happening on the campuses. The the residential open space, which was a zoning requirement, becomes optional. Um, and then it makes some changes to um yard requirements in large lots. And these changes, they apply everywhere, not just on campuses or targeted areas or in A D Us. So and 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 when I say everywhere, they apply to existing buildings as well as new ones. So they may impact you. They impact me, right? So I, this is one of the things, you know, when you, when you work in zoning, it's like, you know, usually it's affecting somewhere else, but this is actually going to impact the building where I live in and my apartment. Um, so I live in this building on the right. I live in this um unit here. It is built as a one-bedroom apartment. The building was built in nineteen seventy. Um, it has two legal windows. It has on the balcony area, it has a legal window and in the bedroom area has a legal window. By legal window, I mean it either faces a um street or a um legal rear yard or court um that has thirty feet space. These windows here on the side, they're too close to the building um directly to the west. They are not legal windows. They're there. Um, they provide light and air, but they don't provide, they don't have enough space between them to provide legal light and air. But as people do in New York City, the dining room area is carved out and made into a bedroom. Um, and this is my bedroom where my kids grew up. Um, but it remains a legal one-bedroom because there's not enough space for this to be a legal window. So by changing the zoning here, by cha- Housing Opportunity would actually transform my one-bedroom apartment into a two-bedroom apartment. Not by changing the apartment, but by changing the laws that determine what that means. All right, so as I said, that there there are a whole bunch of questions that have been submitted, and the rest of this is really, I'm just gonna go into the questions. Um, they're not in any particular order. Uh, and there are, I'm sure there are more because I, there were so many, I couldn't get to all of them. I just went until I ran out of time. Um, but I'm gonna essentially read the questions and then the answers, and I think this is like the part, like if I misunderstood the question or I'm not being clear, um, it that this is be good to focus in on this quest, these questions. So um, shouldn't there be parking maximums for either all of C D five or specifically the Midtown Special District prioritize housing units over amenities for luxury housing? So there currently are parking maximums in your community district. There currently parking maximums for all of uh the Manhattan Core, which is community districts one through eight. Um, in your community district, the parking maximum is twenty percent. Um, so if you have a hundred uh spaces, you could have um uh, you know, or or let's say fifty spaces, you could have, um, I'm sorry, fifty units, you could have ten. City of Yes for Housing Opportunity doesn't change this. Uh, but it does expand the special permit to allow buildings that currently have no accessory parking to add up to fifteen spaces. And that's kind of thematically where Housing Opportunity is. It says yes. Doesn't, it it tries to, um, you know, if you have no parking and you want to add parking, there is now a path to do that. Uh, prior to that, if you had to have parking already to expand it, this would apply it to buildings without parking. Um, what number does the dwelling unit factor need to be for feasible shared housing? So Housing Opportunity eliminates the dwelling unit factor in your community district entirely, and the dwelling unit factor is a number, it's six hundred and eighty square feet, which is used to ensure that buildings cannot be constructed with all small units. Essentially, you add up all the residential floor area, including corridors and elevators and stairwells. All the residential floor area divided by the number of units and and you have to have a number greater than six hundred and eighty square feet for it to to qualify right now. So, but with this change, eliminating it, the unit size is going to be determined by the developer and their 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 decisions. And then the Housing Maintenance Code and the Building Code. Um, in the past, and D C P has said that the dwelling unit factor the smallest practical size of an average unit would be um three hundred and twenty-five square feet, and this is when um, the dwelling unit factor was eliminated for senior housing. Um, but you know, essentially around three hundred and twenty-five square feet is the practical um lower limit when you combine the Housing Maintenance Code, the Building Code. So it's essentially taking it out of zoning. It it's unclear um regarding whether this will facilitate the construction of shared housing and how this will work into the shared housing model. Um, but it certainly will uh make for buildings with smaller units and markets that already bump up against it. This is probably not your district. But I know in East Harlem, for instance, they're constantly bumping into that six hundred and eighty square foot limit and, which is suggestive that if it was lower or removed, they would make buildings with smaller units. Other question. I'm concerned that commercial will outcompete residential in, and CB five will see very little change in housing outside the Midtown South Reserving. Um, so there is nothing that in Housing Opportunity that makes housing more preferential than commercial uses in commercial districts. Commercial uses and residential uses will still have to compete with each other uh in most of the district as they do today. But in April, the state passed four eighty-five X, which is essentially the the four twenty-one A replacement, a tax break subsidy for residential buildings with up to twenty-five percent, with with twenty-five percent affordable housing. Um, residential units can take advantage of both four eighty-five X and U A P and with subsidies that may make residential more attractive. State also passed a tax breaks for conversions of non-residential buildings into residential buildings. So you know, these non-zoning incentives, four eighty-five X and the conversion incentives are likely to change the equation at least a little, and they're new. Um, but it remains to be seen how much it's going to change the equation. Will the change, um, will the changes permit pour doors, meaning separate entrances and amenities for affordable units? And no, um, not in the same building. But one thing that's not clear to folks um is that you can do a separate pour built, quote unquote, pour building. Um, this is not new, and uh City of Yes for Housing Opportunity does not change it. And and there's a reason for this. It's that sometimes developers want to do a hundred percent market condo building and take advantage of a you know, the optional R ten bonus for affordable housing. And then so what they'll do is they'll do the condo building and then next door to it on the same zoning lot, you'll construct a small rental building for the affordable tenants. And so there's separate buildings on the same lot. They would have separate doors, obviously, as well. And and you know, the reason is, is that it's very difficult to make um condo projects, market condo projects work with affordable units in the buildings. And this separate quote unquote, pour building is there by design. And you know, finally, um, what Housing Opportunity eliminates the off-site option. But sites that currently can use the off-site option are permitted to do so for the next ten years. And so at least in the near term, that that quote unquote, pour building can be pretty far away. All right, so recent research suggests that Westchester County um is the only New York metro county producing adequate amounts of housing and affordable housing. How does the affordable housing in Westchester County work? Um, so most jurisdictions in Westchester County have a ten percent affordability requirement in their zoning. You build a hundred units, ten of them must be affordable. Um, developments as small as five units must have at least one affordable unit. Um, there are no zoning bonuses or high compensations for the requirement. Um, but and the reason that they have it, it needs to be said, is that there was a two thousand nine settlement with the federal government, which did many things um, uh, that required the county to affirmatively further fair housing and getting some sort of affordable housing program into the zoning was one of the things they had to do. And so the county developed a a model ordinance, and most of the jurisdictions have adopted it. Not not all of the jurisdictions were covered by the settlement agreement. There are a couple that that, you know, were meeting their obligation, but most of them do. And other places that have affordable housing requirements tend to have something more similar to Westchester's small mandate rather than um, U A P or M I H that we do in New York City. Um, did D C P consider a similar citywide mandatory affordable program? And what are the downsides in Westchester's model? Um, so I have heard D C P say that um affordability requirements increase the overall cost of housing. And so if you had them, you expected less housing to be produced when affordability is mandated. And since Housing Opportunity is about creating more housing, uh, it it avoids affordability mandates. So New York City would still have mandatory inclusionary housing areas, absolutely, but Housing Opportunity does not create any new M I H areas. It just preserves the ones that exist. I mean, ultimately, there's, you know, to me, this is really a question of values. Um, you know, do you value rent-regulated housing more than housing in general? Or the reverse is that they have um market rate housing, if you produce enough of it, will affect costs that benefit everybody. Um, and and I think it's pretty clear that Housing Opportunity is about creating more housing. Um, and so they're not actually mandating um or requiring any affordability. Um, so if we're in a housing crisis, why not require affordability for zoning relief? For example, could Housing Opportunity condition the movement of floor area from landmarks on the provision of affordable housing? Um, the short answer is yes, it could. Um, and conditioning uh zoning relief on affordability was a big part of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen effort um that we called zoning for quality and affordability. D C P has decided that similar affordability conditions for zoning relief are not appropriate or effective. So for example, it's in two thousand fifteen, the city wanted to give relief for the sliver rule. Which is the the rule that that limits the height of narrow buildings, and it would only give that relief to affordable developments. Now, that change never made it into the law. It was removed during the land use process. Um, and now in two thousand twenty-four, the proposal is to remove, is is to give the same zoning relief, meaning relief from the sliver rule to virtually all developments regardless of affordability. Yeah, and then, you know, the, this is consistent with the philosophy of Housing Opportunity. More housing of any type will increase affordability, and so changes to sliver will allow for more housing. Um, you don't condition it on affordability. D C P stated that the universal affordability preference is based upon the heiress program that was created, that created senior housing. How much senior housing was created as a result of the heiress program? I don't know the exact number, but it's very little. Um, heiress was adopted in two thousand sixteen, and it was briefly shut down for a time because of fair housing concerns. It also had an eighty percent A M I requirement, which is frankly a little too high for affordable senior housing. Um, and D C P has acknowledged that, I mean, it's it's well-known that that heiress was not well-used. Um, and it said that the changes, like lowering the A M I's to sixty percent will increase its attractiveness. Um, it may very well, uh, heiress also has uh requirements for common areas like dining areas um that that uh that were a part of it, um, which are not necessarily a part of the U A P requirements. What other vehicles exist beyond U A P to maximize F A R when building in midtown or other high-density areas? Um, and so there are several. Um, so in mixed projects, uh, in commercial districts, you can get bonuses from arcades and plazas. Uh, in two thousand twenty-one, we amended zoning to greatly ex- um, ex- expand eligibility for subway improvement bonuses. Um, Housing Opportunity allows floor area to float more widely from landmark transfers, which we're going to discuss in more detail. Um, Housing Opportunity also allows floor area from low-density districts like in the mid-blocks to be moved to high-density, to higher-density districts like the avenues. Um, this is going to unlock uh difficult-to-use floor area. This is probably more impactful outside your district, but it will affect your district in, at least in some areas. Um, Housing Opportunity expands quality housing deductions to all residential developments, uh, including towers and will allow buildings, new buildings to grow by about ten percent. Housing Opportunity would grant relief for most sliver buildings. How many are likely to be built? Um, are there conditions or community input? Well, first, there there are no conditions or community input. This would essentially give the relief as of right to most buildings. They're all but the height factor buildings. It's unclear, though, how many would get built. So currently, sliver prevents buildings less than forty-five feet wide from being taller than the width of the street um, or the height of a budding building. Um, so if that a budding building is taller, you can go up to the height of that that a budding building or So if that a budding building is taller, you can go up to the height of that, that a budding building or what the zoning limit are. And so that, what that means is that the universe of sites that are constrained by sliver, they change as sites are assembled or other buildings get built, they, they change all the time. So it's hard to say how much this is going to apply. Further, DOB allows for what I call creative lot subdivision to allow sites that, that are subject to sliver to avoid it. So for example, if your lot fronts on two streets and sliver applies to one of them, developers can and have simply cut off a tiny portion of their lot to avoid sliver. Yes, they give up a little bit of floor area, but they can go as tall as they, as tall as zoning would permit them. And again, you know, DCP proposed granting sliver relief for affordable buildings. But they were removed during the land use process. That was removed during the land use process then. So who's keeping out of air rights? Who owns them now? Where they've been transferred? And really the, the short answer is no one, other than the people who own the property, the owners themselves. And I think it was 2019, the city council introduced a bill that would require DCP to develop a map or database of zoning lots, the ones that have been declared and development rights transfers. It never advanced. It never got out of committee. At the hearing, DCP said creating such a map would be impossible. Currently zoning lot development agreements that essentially formalize the zoning lot mergers. There and, and development rights transfers are filed on ACRIS. ACRIS is, you know, essentially the, you know, filed with the deed. But there's no other central repository and sometimes the, the maps that are filed with these are like scanned PDFs. Actually quite ridiculous. You would think, so let me just comment here. So you would think that like, that, you know, this is really important. We would be more on top of this, but it's one of those things that it's just kind of evolved and we don't have a plan for dealing with this. I have seen developers use development rights that have been reserved by a party that sold their development rights. And you know, there's not, there's no mechanism to fix that, meaning you have to actually essentially the, it's contract law. Essentially the, the two parties would have to sue each other to resolve it. There's no government body that intervenes in that. All right. So would limiting the size of apartments create more affordability and help move away from luxury? What we've seen on Billionaires Row. So some buildings get developments with gigantic units, right? We've seen these, you've seen these in your district. Sometimes you have buildings that average 5,000 square feet per unit or, or even more. And, and for years, small group of planners have advanced the idea of a reverse dwelling unit factor. So that developments would have to produce both a minimum a number of units as well as a maximum number of units. DCP has said that this would be ineffective and possibly illegal. It's also unclear how this would impact affordability, but it will, I will say it is changing some neighborhoods. This is especially an issue, not only in the billionaires row and big buildings, but we're seeing it in, you know, areas with small tenements where the tenements with eight or 10 units are being converted into single family homes, which happens a lot in the Upper East, Upper West Side, Greenwich Village, which, you know, is emptying out those neighborhoods as, as people, you know, suck down, suck up all those units and turn them into a single family home. And there's nothing, City of Yes for Housing Opportunity does nothing to address that. Could you explain how rights can be transferred? Can they be transferred across counties? How much can be transferred at one time? And what are we likely to see built using these air rights? All right. So transferred development rights from landmarks as proposed under Housing Opportunities is spatially limited. DCP uses, this is a DCP map and it uses this map to show where and how development rights from this landmark can be transferred. And it, and they're saying, well, it can be transferred to the lots in color. Now that would be true if the lots in color were all their own zoning lot. Now zoning lots can't take up more than one tax lot. And so really it's more development rights from this landmark could go to any site in these nine blocks if the zoning lot were constructed in such a way that they could. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. The floor area is usually limited to 20% of the receiving site. So you can't, you can't transfer too much. It's a 20% bonus, not a bonus, but essentially you could increase by 20%. But it is unlimited in 15 FAR districts. And so you have in your community district, a lot of 15 FAR districts. And so the unlimited development from landmarks could actually create your, you know, essentially a very, very tall building, because you also have a lot of landmarks as well. And you know, there's a, it's, it's a fair question of, of should that sort of accumulation of development rights onto a single site be something that's planned? Or is, should that be something that's left to developers? And we've decided, or at least Housing Opportunity is about leaving it for developers. There's again, is also no requirement for any affordability when these development rights are transferred. R11 and R12 will permit residential development in excess of 12 FAR. How does this work with the multiple dwelling law limit? Now, in April, the state made a big change and lifted the 12 FAR cap for projects that provide affordable housing. If you don't provide affordable housing, there's still a limit. Therefore, the city will be free to map these new districts, meaning the R11 and R12 and their commercial equivalents anywhere. So changing the zoning map, meaning putting these districts onto the zoning map, that's a ULP action. And so anytime these districts are proposed, an application will come to the community board, whether it's private or public, meaning if DCP is the applicant or a private entity is, is the applicant, or your recommendation. As ULP actions, it would also involve the city council and the borough president. Mapping them, these new districts would require mandatory inclusionary housing because it would increase their, their underlying FAR. You don't have, at least as far as I could tell, you don't have any MIH areas in your community district right now. And with so many high density areas, you're essentially shut out of mandatory inclusionary housing without this. This change will allow for mandatory inclusionary housing areas in your community district, should they be mapped. And you know, my opinion, I think it's likely the first places we'll see these are in midtown or lower Manhattan, places where you already have high density districts for commercial uses. And then if you increase the underlying residential densities, you'll be able to create new mandatory inclusionary housing areas. Okay. So to use UAP as a preservation tool, can developers simply add more bulk to their existing building? Because they already have people in the building on a regulatory agreement. So it's a conditional yes. So yes, there is this concept of preservation affordable housing. So developers can, can, can do this if they file a restrictive declaration that ensures permanent affordability at the appropriate AMIs for the existing units using UAP. And if they do, then the existing affordable units may satisfy the UAP requirements that they can add to the building. But you know, I think it needs to be said that developers may use other options. So Housing Opportunity has a new CPC authorization for buildings built before 1991. And that, that authorization allows owners to increase FAR by 20% and height by 25%. And that has no affordability requirements, permanent or otherwise. And so would developers choose to permanently encumber their building with an affordable housing requirement to add 20%? Or would they choose to get 20% another way, like getting a CPC authorization? What protections are being offered to commercial tenants? And you know, the short answer to that is none. And in fact, Housing Opportunity eliminates the limited protections offered by the few commercial preservation districts. These are the ones that are, that have the G or the M at the end, C61G, C62G. Essentially, these are areas that essentially if you want to convert an existing building, non-residential building into residences, you gotta go get a special permit. It's not something you could do as a right. And, and this is a significant change in your community district. So this area that we're showing on the map here, it's basically from 14th to 23rd Broadway, Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue, Park. This area right here has a lot of these, well, is entirely these commercial preservation districts. And so what, what the proposal is, what City of Yes for Housing Opportunity does, it removes the special permit requirement to convert the non-residential buildings here to residential and makes it as of right. It will make it much easier to convert non-residential buildings in these areas to residences. Will we still get the offsite inclusionary housing in our 10 districts? And I'd say probably for a while, because the inclusionary, our 10 program is converted to UAP. And so you, it'll probably produce more units, but the offsite option is kept for sites that currently qualify for it and it sunsets in 10 years. So you can still do offsite for the next 10 years if you're, if you currently qualify for the R10 program. Can the proposed changes in yards, courts and legal windows be explained? Okay. And this is, this is in the weeds, but really this is a fundamental piece of, of zoning. Housing opportunity would reduce the amount of space needed for a window that creates habitable room from 30 feet to 20 feet. Now there are already some exceptions to this, meaning like some irregular lots have relief. But generally speaking, you have this, this 30 feet requirement for a legal window. And so if you're now allowing 20 feet for a legal window, that, that allows for a bunch of other changes. So we currently have a 30 foot rear yard requirement on interior lots. Interior lots are normally 100 feet deep because our blocks are 200 feet wide, right? And so the interior lots are 100 feet deep, generally speaking. And so you have this, this 30 foot yard. But if you only need 20 feet for your window, that means you could lower your yards to 20 feet. The same is true with inner courts. Inner courts create light for, for light and air for legal windows. They currently need to be at least 1,200 square feet and no smaller than 30 feet in one direction. Housing opportunity allows them to be 800 feet and no smaller than 20 feet in one direction. Now for both yards and courts, it grows back up to 30 feet and 1,200 feet after 75 feet. Meaning so as you get taller, the requirements come back, but in the lower levels, it's, they're, they're much smaller. Now DCP has said that this change will permit greater design flexibility and may actually improve air access. And again, as I was just saying, the 30 foot rear yards will be kept and the larger courts kept over 75 feet. And you know, in your district, you already have 20 foot rear yards for commercial uses. Commercial uses have different requirements currently than residential uses. And this makes it more like the commercial uses that we currently have. Still, this is a big change from the standards that have been around since at least 1960. It will change the shape and form of the city, along with all of the other changes that we've been talking about. DCP mentioned that this plan ensures 10 community boards are not doing the work of the other 49. But aren't developers still just deciding where they choose to build? How can we ensure that building just doesn't take place in the most desirable areas? Aren't developers still deciding where to choose to build? Yes. The answer to that is yes. In recent times, increases in zoning capacity have been done through neighborhood rezonings in just a few neighborhoods. You haven't had one in your community district. I think you're going through one, you're going through one now, but you haven't had one pass yet. Housing opportunity increases zoning capacity everywhere, not just in some neighborhoods, right? Zoning can change the rules, making development easier or harder, but it can't force development in one place or another. That's the developer's decision. That's a private decision. Now we can influence it with policies like zoning and, and subsidies like 485X. But you can't make those decisions, you know, developers will continue to make their own development decisions and desirability is going to remain a big part of that. So what stops developers from adding 10,000 units of luxury units in midtown Manhattan without taking advantage of the bonus FAR to provide UAP? And the short answer is nothing. Housing opportunity does not require any affordability, but it just doesn't. The optional program UAP provides this 20% more floor area for affordable housing. It's 60% of the AMI. It's permanent, recorded on the deed. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of floor area, but all of the floor area must be used for affordable housing. Now if you're, if you're also using 485X, which is a, the state subsidy, that state subsidy is, is only for 30 years. And 485X can't be used for homeownership units in Manhattan. It's, it's a carve out. I'm not sure why. But this, the, the state said that you can have homeownership units in Queens or in Brooklyn that receive it. But you can't have them in Manhattan. It's likely many condo, and this is my opinion, but, and, and people will disagree. But I think it's likely many condo developers will forego UAP in much of the Manhattan core, where condos are popular. But I think it's also likely that they will use UAP in the outer boroughs and places like East Harlem and Morningside Heights, where you have rentals, where those, where, you know, essentially your rental development will be subsidized not only with, with zoning floor area, but also the state subsidy from 485X. How will permanent affordability be monitored? Is that something handled by HTC? So the main enforcing agent will remain HPD, who will also run the housing lottery when these units come online. And when UAP is, units are created, there's a restrictive declaration that is recorded against the deed showing permanent requirement for affordable housing on that, for that building. And the certificate of occupancy must identify the affordable units in the building. This is, you know, the city will, you know, my experience is, is that the city takes this stuff pretty seriously. There are always bad actors, but HPD, you know, follows up and makes certain that units are being used the way they're supposed to be. All right. So does Housing Opportunity make changes to special purpose districts? And, and special purpose zoning districts? And yes, it does. So about 35% of the pages of the zoning, zoning changes that have been proposed deal with changes to special purpose districts. Your community district has four of them. The largest being the special midtown district. You also have the garment center district, the Union Square district. And there's a tiny portion of the Hudson Yards district that crosses into your community district. And in general, it simplifies often, but not always, removes custom bulk regulations that exist only in one special district or another and in favor for bulk regulations that exist everywhere or more, more common. Housing opportunity makes changes that implements themes, Housing Opportunity themes. So for example, a lot of the changes in special districts are all about simply applying UAP and UAP FARs in the special district. Because if they didn't make those changes and FARs were limited in the special district, that, that would still apply. And so if you're applying UAP FARs, you have to then modify the bulk envelopes in the special district to accommodate them. And so, and we'll go through them very quickly. What are the changes to the special Union Square district, which is this area right around Union Square? So this was adopted in 1980. So this was adopted in nineteen eighty five when Union Square was a very different area. And it was mostly about at the time, the facilitation of the development of ten Union Square. The changes are limited here. It changes the underlying FARs to increase twenty percent or floor area for UAP or senior housing. And it maintains the unique height and setback requirements here, but modifies them for UAP developments. It also modifies the street wall location provisions, largely using the citywide location requirements. It doesn't appear to be a substantive change to me. It's really just making it work with UAP. The Garment Center is adopted in nineteen eighty seven with the, preservation of industry was important there, generally between thirty fourth and fortieth street, west of Broadway. And again, the changes are very similar to Union Square. Changes the underlying FAR to permit twenty percent more FAR for UAP or heirs, modifies the street wall locations exactly similar to how Union Square does. And the height and setback, they're not materially changed. Hudson Yard Special District, the only piece that is here is the, is Madison Square Garden. It essentially removes the requirement that you get a special permit for transferring floor area from a landmark and centers using the new CPC authorization. And the maximum floor area for the site is left unchanged. And then finally, it's the Special Midtown District. So the Special Midtown District is very complicated. It has nearly two hundred pages and it has five sub-districts and six sub-areas in the East Midtown Subdistrict. It's enormous and complicated. But even when it comes to this, it's really not that complicated. It keeps, really the thing that's most notable about any of these, it keeps the special permit requirements for landmark transfers in the East Midtown and Theater Subdistricts. So whereas everywhere else is getting rid of the special permit requirement, we're keeping it here. And there are reasons, there's logical reasons for this because there are conditions for the transfer of those development rights in the existing zoning right now. And that's going to stay, they want to keep them. The other sub-districts though can move floor area via the new CPC authorization. Like the others, it allows for additional floor area for UAP and senior housing. And then it removes some of the bonuses that were only available here for private recreation and refuse rooms because, basically because they're going to be available to all buildings, which is the changes to the quality housing topic thirteen. Basically, all buildings will be, have access to these bonuses. The special permit to modify height and setback is removed, instead relies upon a CPC authorization. Custom street wall locations are removed. Again, going back to some citywide standards, it seems there's seemingly, seemingly minor changes as well. And then the preservation sub-district, which had FAR of eight with no increase for affordability, is increased to nine point six, twenty percent for UAP and senior housing. That's all I had for the questions. I just have, you know, two brief summary slides essentially saying, you know, what does Housing Opportunity have going for it? If you're looking for ways to expand your building, nearly everyone has a path to grow with Housing Opportunity. If you care about a landmark building, this change proposed will give landmarks many more options to monetize their unused floor area to support the landmark. Housing Opportunity has the potential to create a limited market for unused floor area since it can be traded further than it currently can be in a number of different ways. If you believe that the market will supply affordable units through increased supply, Housing Opportunity will likely increase the supply of market rate housing. It certainly increases the capacity for market rate housing and in some districts considerably. If you're in a place where developers build rentals, they will likely use UAP and four eighty five X to produce affordable housing in their building. The expansion in the number of buildings that can be converted to non-residential use may address high commercial vacancies in some areas. And if you prioritize housing over parking, Housing Opportunity removes parking requirements everywhere in the city. And so what are some of the things that people might be concerned about? You care about rent regulated housing. You might be concerned that Housing Opportunity gives zoning relief with no conditions for affordability. If you care about rent regulated housing in the Manhattan core, you might be concerned that UAP is optional and may not be used in markets that demand condos. If you care about the loss of affordable units, you might be concerned that Housing Opportunity does little to stem those losses in the existing affordable housing stock. If you care about predictability in the built environment, the movement of floor area, variable heights according to lots size, that might concern you. If you care about private residential open space and green spaces in the urban environment, many of these spaces can become development sites and required yards shrink. If you care about housing unit losses due to combinations and ever-expanding unit sizes, you might be concerned that Housing Opportunity does nothing to address these issues. I've gone on more than enough. It's noon and hopefully you can all can have questions and discussion.
All right, thank you, thank you, George, for that very in-depth presentation. For, just to clarify for some of the comments in the chat, we will, as soon as George gets us a PDF or a version of this, we will, we will make it available to board members as well as some additional links that we've been sort of working with the office to gather to make sure everyone on the board has the correct website links where a lot of the full text and summaries and animated versions, PDFs can be found. So we're going to start, all right, Nancy, let's do one thing. Let's make sure any attendees who are committee members or board members are upgraded to panelists. Can we just, let's just take a few seconds.
Those, according to Josh, those committee members at board members that wish to be, that were asked if they wanted to be elevated declined. So we have, who we have listed in the participants list.
Great, great, okay. So let's start, let's start with questions from committee members. And then we'll go to Renee, I'll start with you.
Hi, George, thank you so much for that presentation, really appreciate it. I have a question about the private recreation and refuge, refuse bonus, it's twenty percent. Do you know, like, buildings that are being built prior to this bonus, are they, for the most part, providing refuse spaces in any case? Like, are you seeing buildings that don't have that that are being built?
I mean, that's a fair question. So, so quality housing buildings currently have requirements and bonuses for recreation, common recreation space, refuse, trash rooms. And, you know, ultimately, there have been complaints about it because the trash room bonus or exception is twelve square feet, it's really small. It's not good for, if you have to separate stuff and you have a trash chute. But, you know, modern buildings, you expect it, right? Modern buildings, you expect certain amenities. And, and so most do. I think in some buildings where they're really skimping or they don't really have the space, you might not see them. But for the most part, we do, especially since quality housing buildings, which is most development now, requires it.
Thank you.
Samir, go ahead.
Yep, so thank you for the presentation. I had one question about your comment on twenty feet rear yards. You said that we have commercial uses in our district with twenty feet rear yards and, you know, residential is thirty feet. I wanted to understand how that would impact conversions. Like, if you have a twenty feet rear yard building that's commercial and we don't change it to, you know, if we keep it the same as, you know, we keep the thirty feet rear yard residential, does that mean we would not be able to convert that building?
Oh, no, no. So that's the whole reason we have Article One, Chapter Five of the zoning resolution, which essentially says if you're converting buildings, that, you know, pre-existing, non-residential buildings, you get essentially relief from the requirements for windows. And that's been that way since it was first developed in the nineteen eighties, right? We're only expanding it now. Essentially, instead of using zoning's requirements, you use the multiple dwelling laws requirements, which are lesser.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about that.
Great, thank you.
George, I, I'll do a question. So in, in the, is there any, you know, as we were talking about a few of the things in the list, what jumped out at me was that the, there's no, in terms of, and I don't know if there's a precedent from other cities, but it sounds like there's, there's nothing in City of Yes about transit workers or actually like workers for the city. Again, you know, in a lot of Manhattan, the AMIs are very high. So the affordability is based on the AMI scale, which is based on, you know, goes by zone. Does that go by zip code or postal code or?
So area, area median income, AMI, is the, is the federally determined area median income for our area, which includes New York City, Westchester County and Rockland County. So when you have a sixty percent of AMI, it's, it is the sixty percent level for that large area, which includes, you know, part of the suburbs.
Okay, I appreciate you clarifying that because I, I, okay, I'm glad, I'm glad you clarified that.
You often see, you often see AMIs range with a very large number, but because AMIs change according to household, household size. And so you may see an AMI that has like a, you know, a fifty or sixty thousand range to it. And that's because it varies according to the number of persons in the households.
Got it, okay. So, so the midtown, so the AMI for CB five for the same two bedroom apartment is the same AMI for Brooklyn, the entire area?
It is, it is.
Okay, okay. So there isn't, there is no provisions in City of Yes that incentivize housing creation for city employees or city workers in any way, is there?
No.
All right, next question.
I, I wouldn't, I don't know how you would do that in zoning. That seems to be, to be an extra zoning thing, meaning you could do it in policy, but it would be hard to do in zoning.
That's fair, that's fair. Julie?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that AMI question, Aaron, because I guess, is, is there a possibility where it's not one size fits all? And Midtown and higher income areas can have higher AMI versus the South Bronx would have lower AMI requirements? Is that just adding paperwork to DCP or HPD?
Well, I, I mean, it's not how it's done now. I don't want to say that it would be, what you're asking for is a bigger change than it may seem. Because again, the AMIs are set by the federal government and then everything flows from there. And there's all kinds of like requirements.
I, like, the eighty percent AMI, could it be like, in, they're lowering to sixty right now?
Oh, yes, yes, they are.
Forty for the South Bronx versus ninety Midtown?
And that, that happens in, when the city has like a city-controlled site, right? When the city owns the property and they can determine what the AMIs are going to be, you very often see AMIs of forty percent or what they call even lower, which is for formerly homeless. There's a site in East Harlem where they did a twelve FAR building, one hundred percent affordable at, you know, mostly at forty percent of AMI. And, and they do that when they have control over the site. And HPD is very judicious about trying to, you know, expand its subsidies as much as it can to reach the lower and deepest levels of AMI. But you don't often see that in places like your community district where there isn't a lot of public land and housing and land values are high. And so typically you won't see the AMIs reach down to those levels.
Right, so we just want to keep the people in place in our district. And a lot of these workers are making higher AMI than the sixty percent. So it doesn't make sense for that blanket, sixty percent across all community districts.
Well, remember, that's an average. So you could have, in those sixty percent, you could have higher AMIs and lower AMIs. They just need to average to sixty percent.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just wondering if, it sounds more complicated if it was different for Manhattan versus the Bronx versus Queens.
David Sigmund, you're up.
Thanks, Aaron. I had a couple of questions, George, on some of these like quantitative changes where the, you know, we talked about the change in the rear yard, the reduction from thirty feet to twenty feet of the legal light and air. Was there a sort of basis in fact on making these changes? Was there something that made thirty feet, thirty feet at the time? Or were these just sort of preferences or market preferences? Is there any historical background on it?
Oh, gosh, there's so much, there's so much. So, you know, another version of this, I get into like the kind of history of light and air and tenements in New York City. And, you know, it evolved from, you know, old law tenement, the new law tenement, to nineteen sixteen zoning, to the multiple dwelling law in nineteen twenty nine. And every step along the way, it was about making more and more light and air for legal windows. I mean, the whole concept of, of, you know, how the other half lives, you know, Jacob Rees, like the, the idea that tenements created health problems, social problems. The lack of light and air was almost, light and air was almost treated as a medicine that would cure the society's ills. And so it got bigger and bigger and bigger up until nineteen sixty one. And, and so where does the thirty feet come from? I mean, the thirty feet ultimately, you know, largely comes from the shape of Manhattan and the way we've divided our blocks, right? Is that, is that, blocks are a hundred feet deep? I mean, sorry, blocks are two hundred feet deep, interior lots are a hundred feet deep. And so a seventy percent coverage and a thirty foot rear yard, it all works out. Now, whether it was twenty nine or twenty eight or thirty two is like, you know, I can't really get into it, I don't really know. But ultimately, they settled on thirty feet after years, generations of increasing required light and air standards. And they've stayed there for the past sixty years. Now, here's the thing that, that, you know, I have a lot of thoughts about this because, you know, changing standards like this is a very, very big deal when it comes to zoning. But, you know, it might be time to change them, right? You know, we have air conditioning now. When these standards were developed, we did not have air conditioning, right? We have, we have LEDs now having, having, you know, cheap electric lights. You know, in the nineteen fifties, electric lighting was really expensive. And, you know, your grandmother probably always told you to make out the light, right? You know, to, because it costs a fortune. And, and, and so revisiting these standards, I think would be, you know, it's absolutely appropriate to. What was surprising to me about this is that when you're looking at your list, it never asks you what you think about changing those standards. And you would not actually really know that they are proposing to change those standards unless you read the zoning or talk to me. And that's, that's, I think, I think that's important and I think it's an important discussion to have. I'd like to know what public health people, I'd like to know what mental health people think about that. I don't really know. And, and I think there's a discussion that just hasn't really been had.
And, and this applies to distance between buildings as well, right? So this is a twenty-foot setback on both sides of a property line, so forty feet from building to building in that case, or?
Distance between buildings on the same zoning law. And that mostly, you know, that's mostly about the campus infill. Because, you know, those, all this urban renewal that we did to create light and air just has essentially left a lot of vacant land. And that vacant land can't really be used unless we change these zoning rules. And if we change these zoning rules, it's, it's a game changer.
Oh, and I guess, you know, since you, you mentioned the, um, campus infill. I mean, I know there's been a lot of debate for a long time about additional development on the NYCHA campuses, which seemed independent of what zoning allowed. Um, you know, is that, y- 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 you know, looking at the diagram that you did, that's the sort of maximum allowable envelope in that one example. And yet there are other ways in which those envelopes are reduced through discussions with tenants in existing NYCHA houses.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right.
Right, I, I, you know, I, I would just say, you know, existing zoning is a major impediment to infilling those sites. And so we have seen lots of options, um, lots of discussions about infilling them over the years. Um, I've collected a dozens of them as a kind of hobby. But what this does is it makes any of them actual development sites, right? Because many of them you can't do because you don't have the, the, the way that you need all that residential open space. It's part of the zoning calculations. And so, yes, it's empty, but it's a requirement. And, and this gets rid of that and makes it optional. It's, it's really a, a major change and it will, and it's not only NYCHA, it's like, you know, you, you have any of the big, uh, campuses, uh, mostly in, in like CB six has a lot of them. Um, but I'm sure you have a few, two, few as well.
Right. Um, all right, just moving us along, uh, David Shapiro, you're up.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. So, um, just to follow up sort of to what David was, was mentioning, um, you, you know, from a factual standpoint on this, these changes in light and air, right? Like, I know Philadelphia doesn't, doesn't require windows in bedrooms, right? And so there's a lot of other scenarios and zoning scenarios where, um, you know, I, I guess I just wanted to see if, you know, are there other examples where there's a public health issue with sort of our modern air conditioning or, or, or technology where there's, there's challenges to that? Where, where that would be a problem to, to lose that ten feet?
I'm sure there are. I, I'm not necessarily the right person to ask on this. I mean, you know, you have architects who design buildings and who have to consider, um, you know, about fire spacing distance and, and, and other things. And, and people who are in the public health and I, I'm just, all I'm doing is when I, when I'm acknowledging this is that this is a big change. Meaning we've been doing things one way for a, a long time. And we're, we're making a material difference in, in the changes of a standard. And I, I'm not the right person to ask what the consequences are of that, other than, other than to say you can build a lot more. And it will be effective in that.
And then my other question is, is, um, you know, in other, you know, I understand, I saw that the, the, the comparison to Westchester, and I think Westchester is a little bit, it's sort of a little bit of apples to oranges to New York City. You know, in other major cities across the country, where mandatory inclusionary housing has been put into effect, places like San Francisco, you know, w- w- what has, what have the results looked like there? Because I, I do know, I guess in twenty-three that they, they rolled some of those back to, to, to spur housing, right? And so some of those were, were, were a bit on the aggressive side. So are there data points to show how this will really actually spur housing as opposed to?
Yeah, I, 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 I only, I, I only know anecdotal. I, I know like Washington DC has a mandatory inclusionary hu- housing. Uh, that's more effective than, um, San Francisco. But, you know, I think generally speaking, what the research shows is that if you have, if you have an affordability requirement, you get less housing overall, but you get more affordable rent-regulated housing. And so ultimately, it's like, what do you, do you, do you want more affordable rent-regulated housing? Or do you want more housing overall? And that more housing overall will affect overall market rate affordability. Um, and I think that's, that, that's, that's the question and, and what you value.
And, and have, have you had any data points to show sort of what that cha- what that actual balance is out to be?
There, there is, there is research out there, um, and, and it's, you know, suggestive, uh, that, that there will be some reduction, but I don't know how much of a reduction it would be.
Thank you for, for, for the presentation and look forward to the memo.
Yep.
You know, I see that, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give John the chance to, to speak from DCP, um. John, you have your hand raised. Thanks for joining us.
Hello, how are you?
Great.
Okay, you hear me. Um, so John Manchin from City Planning here, uh, the head of the Housing Division. And I'll be coming by on, on Wednesday to your meeting, uh, then. So, I mean, obviously it's not a format for us to go point by point, but we will respond in, in writing today and hope to get, uh, some time on Wednesday to, to correct the record. Um, you did see some outright false information today. Um, we'll follow up with George as we always do when we see it. Um, and some nearly intentionally misleading information. So you saw a flurry of details. You know, we wanna, for today, just keep the focus on the big, big picture, which, you know, as these proposals emerge directly from our comprehensive fair housing plan uh, that we created with HPD back in, in twenty twenty, uh, where we live. And they are absolutely designed to maximize affordable housing production over alternative approaches. And, you know, also greatly enhance equity, uh, development in the city um, by enabling more housing in every neighborhood for the first time, uh, ever. So I'll leave it at that for today. Um, but look out for, um, written responses today, which we would absolutely welcome you making public, um, for anybody who uh, was here at this presentation today. And then I'll hope to be, uh, able to discuss some of this more on, at the Wednesday meeting. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you, John.
I think I need to respond to that just briefly. Um, John and I disagree on some things, um, which, you know, I think is part of the process. Um, and, you know, you can hear what he has to say. Um, I encourage you to, um, understand that DCP is, you know, this is their application. Uh, they know it better than anyone, including me. Um, but ultimately, there's a lot of speculation on how it's going to play out. You know, we have a complex system. And zoning is a very complex system and there's lots of changes being made to it. And how it's going to play out in the future is really, is unknown. And we can speculate and we can do the best we can. And that's what I'm trying to do.
Great. No, I appreciate that, um, response. Um, let's go back to Ren- Renee.
Hi, thanks, Aaron. I just have a couple of questions. One is, um, I, I know it's not zoning, but are there any environmental groups that are concerned particularly about infill and the light of the air and space and, you know, uh, just the coverage that, that these infills would create?
I, I have heard some concern over that, um, that the fact that there, some groups are thinking, well, you know, these, the campuses especially. Um, I had a conversation with, uh, a tenant organizer in a NYCHA, um, development who is like, you know, they, these developments are not, are not development sites, right? They were designed to function a certain way. Um, and that putting buildings on them is something that, um, would not be appreciated. Now, to be very clear, there would be a separate process for that, right? There's, there's night, you know, they are controlled by NYCHA. It's not just gonna happen. They're, they have their own process. And so, um, it's, it wouldn't just happen, right? Uh, but zoning would permit it to happen, right? And that's what's in front of you. What's in front of you is the changes to zoning. And, um, that, that, those changes would permit it to happen.
Thank you. And, and just to follow up on, um, th- this zoning, and I understand this may not be zoning, doesn't require like cum- cumulative. We're hearing that we're gonna hear all the, get all this housing, which is gonna suggest more people are gonna be house- is there anything that requires like schools, uh, fire? Any, any, all the amenities that go along with extra stuff?
Um, so there is a full environmental impact statement that has been created on this. Um, and that there were some impacts that were disclosed in that. But, you know, there's a lot of unknowns when it comes to what's gonna happen in the future here. So as I said, they s- they, they studied that between fifty-nine thousand and a hundred and nine thousand units of housing will be created uh, during the analysis period. Um, but, you know, they're often wrong. And, and the Municipal Arts Society did a great study looking at, at, you know, going back and looking at how these assumptions were, um, uh, how they performed over time. And, and, you know, we're making major, major changes to zoning right now, Renee. And, and we don't actually know how it's going to play out. Um, it will massively increase zoning capacity in some areas and other areas it's not. And how, how private developers use these changes to the rules to, um, essentially affect their plans, uh, there's gonna be some necessary unknowns. So it's impossible to fully, um, mitigate everything.
And if, if I could just add one more, Aaron, I'm just, there, there's a lot of building sites in CB five now. Like we have the Adorama, it's been vacant, you know, Bancroft, Rizzoli. Um, I have a site next to me that hasn't been developed. With zoning, you could do that now. Could you speak to like why we're not using the sites that we have? Or is that outside of this conversation?
Well, I mean, are they privately owned sites? Yeah. So, so privately owned sites are up to the developers to redevelop them. Um, you don't have very many publicly owned sites in your district. Um, when the city has a publicly owned site, they very often, you use it to the maximum, um, of their abilities to create, um, affordable housing. Uh, and they've, they've, they've have a good track record of doing that, but there, that leaves districts like yours out in the cold.
Thank you.
Um, George, going back to, um, condo versus rental, the incentives. You know, obviously, you know, like, like you were just saying, you know, there's lots of economic factors that would impact, you know, and based on Renee's questions, right? Why, you know, post-COVID, there's been some challenges where there's been a lot of vacant sites in our district, uh, or, you know, not, for whatever reason, um, not finished developments or projects that were paused or, or, in terms of the zoning text changes that are happening, you know, could you talk about some of the incentives that would not be available to your condo versus rental? And a lot of things we've talked about, I think, are very rental specific. So again, um, could you discuss sort of, you know, if, if a developer wants to do a condo building, you know, in our district and is pretty, you know, pretty gung ho about condos versus rentals?
Yeah.
Um, could you explain that difference and, and what would be their path to getting, you know, incremental floor area?
Right. Okay, so it's a great question because this is actually probably, I think, where, where John and I disagree the most, um, is, is what will happen with condos, right? Will condos use UAP to, um, get extra floor area? And, and here's the problem with it. The problem is, is that condos can't, um, use four eighty-five X. So what you're doing is you're getting a twenty percent floor area bonus. And then all of that floor area that you get must be used for affordable housing, which will lose you money on an operating basis over time, right? And it's permanent. And so, so the question is, and on top of that, you have the difficulty of how you fold in the affordable housing into a condo development. As I, as I was talking about, sometimes you see the, the condo building next to an affordable rental, right? Where you, where you have a separate rental building next door to the condo. Um, which, you know, you can do, but a lot of sites, you can't do that because you, you, um, you're, you have to use that space for your building. Uh, you only, you have to have a, a large enough site to be able to do something like that. Um, and so, you know, the question is, is will, will developers, and, and, you know, I, probably a lot of you on this, this call will, could answer this question as well as I can. Will developers permanently impair their properties with this twenty percent affordability requirement, um, for twenty percent of floor area bonus? And I think that's a very open question without the four eighty-five X. Now, if you're doing a rental, however, you could do four eighty-five X. So you get this extra subsidy on top of it. And so I think it makes it a lot more attractive to, um, to rentals, uh, with, and use UAP. And so I think you'll see a lot of places use UAP. It's just the question of how it's going to be used in the Manhattan core.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, let's go to Neil and then to Samir.
Hey, thanks, Aaron, and thanks, George, for presenting, um, back to the earlier question about environmental organizations. I know, um, the League of Conservation voters said some, said some positive things about this. Um, mostly focused on movement, parking requirements in the town center zoning. And, you know, I know it's complicated because those things don't impact Community District Five in terms of the development happening here. But they, you know, we've, uh, will probably affect our district in terms of traffic and congestion and the way people get around the city if it does encourage people to use public transit, um, or bike more to get into the center business district. Is there any, um, modeling or do you have any opinions, or maybe it's in the environmental impact statement, looking at, um, impact on air quality and accessibility of things in the, in CD five based on the changes in other places?
Um, regarding air quality, I, I, you know, that is a study area in the, in EIS. I do not know what it says about it in CD five. I have not really gotten way into the, um, EIS. It's something that we can look into. I, I don't think it disclosed any impacts on, um, air quality. And if, in fact, air quality improved, it, it, you know, it wouldn't be an impact that would be disclosed. You have to disclose significant adverse impacts, not necessarily improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Samir, did you still have a question?
No, I think we can skip me. I'm curious what, um, other people might have to say. It looks like there's still someone in the public who has their hand raised.
Um, all right, well, I'm gonna transition to public comments, um, and then we can come back to, um, additional comments. Andrew W., um, and Andrew, if you could, you'll be allowed to speak. Um, and if you could just confirm, um, your, your, your resident or business owner in the, in the district, or if you just introduce yourself and you're allowed to speak.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Andrew Watrous. I work on corner of Forty-Eighth and, uh, and Seventh Avenue in CB five. My question for Mr. James, uh, and thank you for, for the presentation. The housing stock that would not be created if, uh, City of Yes for Housing Opportunity does not pass. I'm curious what you think that the impact would be uh, on market rate housing, market rate rentals, um, which is, you know, I, I live in Manhattan. I have a market rate rental. I'm just wondering if you have, uh, any view on how that would impact if, if City of Yes for Housing Opportunity does not pass. Thank you.
I, I, uh, I mean, I, I'm not a housing, um, expert and not a, a finance expert. I can tell you what, um, I've heard other people say. Other people have said that, uh, by creating more market rate housing citywide, and I expect that this will create more housing if this passes, uh, create more, uh, market rate housing citywide. It will have some depressing effect on existing market rate housing, or at least that's the, that's the, um, that's what I've heard other people say.
Okay, thank you, George. Um, so seeing no other public hand raised, uh, at the moment, um, but if, if you have a question, please, uh, raise your hand on Zoom. So let's go back to, uh, the committee and, and members of the board with additional question or, or comments. Um, at this point, we can- Um, at this point, we can transition to, to comments if anyone would like to speak. Um, so let's go back to Neil.
Sorry, just uh terminology question. By depressing, you mean lower rents than there would be otherwise?
Yeah, that, right. So the idea is, is that there's a limited market for rental housing. And if you have more of it, then ultimately the market will respond by, by either limiting increases or, or actually decreasing costs over time. I mean, it's, it's again, that's the subsect that's, that is not rent stabilized, right? That is not legally rent regulated, um, which is, has to respond in some way to market forces.
Um, Renee, let's go to Renee.
Hi, I'm sorry to keep um asking so many questions, but um I was reading the vacancy report that was released last month. And it seems there's been a lessening of percentage paid toward housing costs. But just not for those low income renters, which suggests we need the low income affordable housing, the real low income and not just the additional building if the median rent to income ratio is down. Would that be fair or am I getting this right?
I, I have not reviewed the housing vacancy survey, but I have heard the idea that um uh, lower that, that we need to do more to um address the needs of lower income New Yorkers uh and that, that uh having more units, rent regulated units at lower AMIs would directly address their needs.
Uh, let's go to Julie.
Yeah, I, I guess um I'm concerned about the amenities, the lack of public spaces that we already have in Midtown with the additional density. You know, just thinking about what CB five asked in the East, the East Midtown rezoning. And we got, I think, ten thousand square feet of public open space in that rezoning. And then just thinking about our uh floor area bonuses for public plazas. I think you get one additional FAR to create some plaza space. Like, how does that change or get affected with this COY housing opportunity? And what should we consider to make sure that Midtown has some of the amenities for the additional density?
Um, sure. Uh, so you have the commercial plaza and arcade program which stays into effect. It's been there for a long time. It's created a lot of this publicly access, privately owned, publicly accessible spaces uh that you have in your district. Uh, there's a lot of them. Um, we used to have something called the residential plaza program. And so you saw a lot of residential buildings that used to take advantage of plazas. And you see those mostly like on the Upper East Side or the Upper West Side, where you have a big residential building and a plaza in front of it with a sign that says you can go in. Um, we got rid of that, right? That's no longer a thing. Um, it was, I don't know, I think it was late eighties or early nineties, we got rid of that. Um, and that was because the, the residential plazas were oh, a lot of them really weren't um kept up well, uh, and weren't really designed well. But I will tell you that during COVID, I live in a neighborhood with a lot of these things. Oh, they were a lifesaver. They were an absolute lifesaver to have all of these public spaces um attached to buildings uh in a place that had almost no public parks. Um, and I was really, I didn't really appreciate them until that time. And, you know, and so if you're thinking about, you know, public spaces. Um, if, if we're having larger um residential buildings, buildings that could get up to eighteen FAR. Is it appropriate to start thinking about, well, would a residential plaza bonus be something that would be appropriate in your community district, considering how high density it is already? Um, and if you get behind something like that, it could be a comment here, it would be out of scope. It wouldn't be something that could do here, but it's could be something your board works for in a zoning amendment to affect your board, if it's something that you all decided was a good idea. Um, and that's something you wanted to try to affect.
So I'm gonna um, I'm gonna go back to public for, for one second. We have Sharon Riley. Um, you're permitted to speak. If you could just please confirm your residential or business interest in CB five with Cross Streets um and you're permitted to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Um, I, I, I live on Seventeenth Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenues. Um, I, housing is not at all um my area of expertise. I'm an attorney. I worked for the city for a number of years. I'm much more focused on sort of the mayor and criminal justice and Rikers Island and so on. However, I found this report rather disturbing on a number of levels. Um, first of all, it seems to me that it's, it's really a gift to developers. And I don't think that's really what we want or what I want or that we need in the city. Um, the environmental issues, um, the infill, I don't know if that's only at the particular campus that you mentioned in one of your, your drawings, um, or whether that covers other areas. But at a time when we need more green space, where we should be advocating for green roofs, for more open spaces. You're suggesting that we fill in every possible space that exists. I find that very disturbing. Um, also, um, I happen to know, I don't know if anyone else does, Vishan Chakrabarti, who had a senior level position, okay, in the city, uh, and who's an architect and has his own firm now. Um, and he at one point had written a, uh, I guess it was an op ed, because it took up two full pages in the New York Times, where he talked about in specific buildings and specific sites all over the city, not just in, in our area that could be easily, relatively easily um developed into housing and also into low income housing. I, I don't see anything happening here or suggested here that really is going to increase uh, the amount of housing for low in, income people. And I find, I find the whole thing very, very distressing. Um, I assume you're not going to infill places like Stuyvesant Town. Uh, but we certainly need more green spaces and I don't see anything that addresses that. It all seems to be gifts to developers.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Sharon. All right, going back to uh the committee. Uh, Samir.
Yeah, um, I just want to say that this was a great presentation and thank you so much. I'm looking forward to more conversation on Wednesday. Um, and that I'm specifically excited about UAP because, you know, the main differences from the voluntary inclusionary housing program, which, you know, was requirement of eighty percent AMI across the board. This allows income averaging with a maximum of a hundred percent. So I'm looking forward to, you know, getting a nice mix of units, not just a glut of eighty percent AMI, which is what VIH got us. So I'm very excited about that. Um, and looking forward to more conversation on Wednesday.
Thank you, Samir. David Sigmund.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, I mean, I guess I just wanted to scale some of these comments as well. I mean, for, for, for the good and, and um, not so good side of it. I mean, I, I think the ability of this program to really change the nature of the market for rental housing in New York. You know, given that it, the city at, at the upside thinks it will produce a little bit more than a hundred thousand units in a city that has millions of units. We're really talking about almost an experiment uh, in what it takes to build more housing, which is becoming, you know, almost a universal good uh in the city. So you know, I, I take to heart comments about concerns about, you know, public space and whether it'll change the, the nature of the city. But at this scale, it would be hard to see how it would do that. I, I will say, you know, to, to George's previous comment about building more housing could potentially reduce rents, you know, it probably argues against that at this scale as well. Uh, adding a hundred thousand units to this mix isn't really going to change anything, but it's a way of getting the ball rolling uh in a different direction. It doesn't eliminate any of the programs that produce affordable housing. Uh, you know, all of the city and state subsidy programs will still exist. So there still will be ways of um producing uh additional affordable housing that are kind of separate and distinct from City of Yes. Um, and we'll also have to try and learn from whatever comes out of the City of Yes effort to see what worked and what didn't and where things got built and where they didn't. Um, John uh mentioned, uh, mentioned, you know, equity, which we didn't really talk about. I, it would be hard to argue that the current system is an equitable system. We build a lot of affordable housing in the Bronx and uh in distant parts of Brooklyn and Queens and uh, you know, is that really how we want to build affordable housing? Um, the mixed use programs and the ways of financing those have been eliminated uh to a large extent over time. Um, so there are a lot of underlying issues where this program may end up raising more questions in a different context uh about a lot of the same concerns that we've had all along, but it is a way of changing our view of how we might get to a housing solution that's, you know, more equitable and starts to influence um the um, the levels of market rate rents as well. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna make a couple comments and then, you know, we'll, we'll keep going a little bit and then we'll have to, we'll have to wrap this up soon due to timing, but uh, we're definitely going to have a great discussion on Wednesday. So looking forward to, to addressing a lot of this on Wednesday as well. Um, quickly on my side, you know, I, I think the, the concept of the sliver building, you know, knowing the history of the regulations and the restrictions that was tried to sort of harness uh, that issue, you know, I think that, that has a lot of history there. And I, and I think, you know, I definitely want to, you know, learn more and discuss about um, what exactly that's reversing, because I, I do think there was a lot of community concern about the idea of a sliver in certain neighborhoods, you know, not being a, being a, a real challenge for some, some communities. So that, you know, I, I, that one makes me want to look more into that. Um, you know, the, the concept of it seems like we're going to be doing a lot more of transfer of air rights. So by increasing the volume of those transfers, it seems like we definitely need a automated solution um, of some sort of database and accountability and to make that system, prepare that system for the future. Um, so that seems like there's a, there's a need. So it was great to see that highlighted. So I'd love to talk to DCP about their thoughts on, on what realistically could happen in terms of that, that database and have some transparency to those. Uh, just know, you know, what's, what's going on in the community, especially if we're going to be doing those transfers at a higher volume in certain districts. Um, you know, the, the, just the idea of some potential um cap on the size of units, I think is, is, is an interesting discussion to have. I think in some communities, you know, that's a real concern. So, you know, that that there's nothing in City of Yes that addresses that. I think that's, there's again, a real concern by some some communities and some residents of, of the challenges there. So what could we, what are the things we could recommend to potentially address that? Um, and I think given, you know, I think we've seen um population decline. So these new luxury buildings that are getting built with actually less units. Um, you know, it'd be interesting to see if, if George has any stats on that, you know, post COVID, New York City has lost population. These luxury units where fifty units were placed, what could have been three hundred units. I don't know if that is partially to blame, but it'd be interesting to look at those stats with the recent population shifts. Um, and then, you know, looking at the research in the background on how New York, you know, helped the sort of neighborhood tenement issue and, and provided, you know, better environmental conditions for for millions of people who needed to sort of live in the city. Uh, you know, we're again, preparing for the future. How do we prepare housing stock for the future? And I think the science behind the research of, of what is an appropriate amount of light and air. Um, it'd be really interesting to see, you know, to dive into some of that, that research and background. Um, versus, you know, arbitrarily is twenty good, is thirty good. Uh, but I do think there was a generational amount of work that went into, you know, the, the zoning resolutions at the time. So it'd be interesting to see some of the background there. Uh, and again, look at the science and the facts behind some of the environmental conditions that we, we really tried hard as a city to get rid of. Um, and we want to make sure that we're again, preparing for the future and, and what are the appropriate conditions for apartments? And I don't think we want to bring back the conditions of the late eighteen hundreds. Um, Lower East Side conditions. So that in addition to the uh, I really want to know more about what, what happens with the CPC authorization versus special permits, you know, does that limit the community review? You know, there might be great, great uh examples where that makes it more efficient and speeds up the process. But what do we lose as a community review uh with those transfer of air rights? Um, so what is, you know, what are the pros and cons between that moving to a CPC authorization versus community board review? You know, it'd be good to like, look at that. Uh, I think George has some details on that too, so that, that maybe is a discussion we can have on Wednesday. Uh, in, as it impacts our special districts in Midtown. So specifically in the garment district, Hudson Yards, special Midtown district and Union Square. So I'll go back to the committee, uh, but those are some of the things that were jumping out at me as, uh, as we look, dive into this. Um, Neil, I'll go back to you.
So much. I'm sorry for just have another question based on the public comment. Um, I understand that in the past few years, New York has passed laws about you know, green and solar roofs, sustainable roofs, and also about electrification. I'm guessing those things would apply to any new buildings built or probably a lot of modifications to roofs under City of Yes.
Uh, yeah, uh, the answer is yes. Um, in City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality, there were a whole bunch of changes to um uh, you know, solar panels and, and, and new mechanical equipment that could be put on the roof. So rooftop obstructions got a lot bigger um, to accommodate for, you know, rooftop changes for electrical equipment and solar panels. And then previous to that, there were changes to um that, that would facilitate the development of green roofs, like that, so the soil and the plants become a permitted obstruction that can go above the height of the roof. Um, and so the city has actually been really, I think, very forward looking in terms of changing zoning to accommodate uh carbon neutrality and green roofs.
And just a, my experience on that, I recently discovered that my building has a green roof that's accessible. Um, that I think was added during renovations a few years ago. And I noticed that a lot of older buildings, you know, when I look down don't have those. It looks like the roofs aren't accessible and that's definitely a great, it's accessible to people. There's vegetation on it. I think it also reduces on often things like that. So that's, see more of those things available to people.
Thank you, Neil. Um, let's go to Nancy, and I think we're going to have time for maybe two or three more, um, and then we'll have to wrap.
Um, I would just like to say that uh the uh building code of the City of New York covers a lot of the things that Neil mentioned. There are a number of local laws and our um building code is moving closer and closer to passive house. Um, and that will include a number of things that Neil talked about. So um, those things are all afoot, but not in zoning, but rather in building code and local laws. So you may want to look into the building code and into local laws for those answers. I just wanted to say the thing that's most important to me is if we are in a housing crisis, we are in a housing crisis for people who can't afford to live in New York City. So whenever this program, these initiatives, these proposals do not include affordability, I ask, why are we doing this? It's just that simple, the question. Everything that we look at, we must ask the question, does it help us provide more affordable housing? Does it help us house the homeless? Does it help us give affordable apartments to families who Does it help us give affordable apartments to families who are struggling to live here? Our workers, our, our, um, all the employees that work for the city, all the employees in the trades. They need places to live and they need places to live close to home so that we aren't having uh, mass transit overwhelmed. We need to have people living within fifteen minutes of where they work. That would be my dream. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, let's go to Renee Consella again.
Thanks. Thank you. Sorry for all this. Is there any um, information about potential displacement that this plan will um, create particularly for people already in affordable housing or lower income people?
Um, well, okay, so there is a direct and indirect displacement part of all environmental reviews. Um, however, I got to tell you that the method used in, that is terrible. It's really not very meaningful, um, in my humble opinion. It doesn't really produce very good results. Um, so I, you know, I, I can tell you that, that there is a, there is a study that, that's, that's part of it. I don't know what it says on it. Um, I just know that the method that they use is, is flawed for it, so I wouldn't necessarily rely upon it. And that's the only requirement, right? That's the only requirement for studying um, displacement. And so I guess the answer is, to your question is, no, there's really not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Um, let's go back to David Shapiro.
Hey, I, I think there's a public member, Andrew, on the, that, that has his hand up for a while. So can I, can we, can we go to the public member?
Um, I, I believe he already, I, it's the same Andrew that spoke before.
Oh, okay. All right, got you. Yeah, I mean, look, I, Nancy, to, to, to your, to your comments, I think, um, what my understanding of this proposal is that it is going to create more housing. And by creating more housing, you're creating affordability within the city, right? Uh, basic market supply and demand, we are addressing a housing crisis here, which I believe is very severe and is only going to get more severe in the next three to five years unless we do something about it today. And so I think that this is a good first step to providing ability for folks to build more housing, which will create a more affordable situation for the majority of, of New Yorkers. What I find problematic with the way that a lot of the city handles housing here is that we throw a lot of money at a very small number of units at the detriment of the city. And what we need to be doing is providing for way, way, way more housing, which is going to create affordability for everybody in New York City. Um, and I agree that incentivizing folks to, to provide housing for the lowest income folks is important. But we need to be throwing a, um, all of the different traps that we can to increase housing to the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Andrew, I, I, I think your hand went back up. I'll, I'll allow another quick comment if you do have another question or comment. Um, so, Andrew.
Thank you. I actually have a, a very quick question for, uh, for George. That's all right. So if there are shortcomings to this particular plan that he sees or that the, that the board sees, I'm wondering if he's aware of any other proposals that would create a comparable amount of housing that we need uh, for the city that, that he might like better?
Oh, um, I, I mean, this is the only proposal that's in front of us now, right? Um, and, and there, there are tons of things that people talk about. Uh, but this is your proposal right now. And uh, and you have to decide whether this is, you know, what you want to vote on or recommend it or modifications for it to make it better. Um, but ultimately, I, you know, I, I, that's, it's a fair question, but I think it's much bigger than um, we can get into right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew, for your question. So it looks like we, uh, we are almost at one o'clock. So we've had a, a great conversation. Um, we are looking forward to um, continuing it. So here's my quick P S A for our next upcoming meetings to mark your calendar. Wednesday night, six o'clock. Community Board Five will be having our Land Use Housing and Zoning Committee meeting. Uh, we do have a full agenda of a few applications. Um, but we will be spending most of the evening discussing City of Yes housing opportunity. Um, so we will be addressing additional questions with D C P. We will be reviewing uh, additional comments and questions from the committee as well as um, any other public conversation. Um, we will also be summarizing um, any letters and comments that the board office may have received on the topic. Um, so we have received a few. So Nancy will be summarizing um, all of those correspondence that the office has received on this topic. Um, so we can have a lively, lively discussion uh, on Wednesday evening. Is there anyone that would like to, um, Nancy, did I forget anything? Um, Nancy will be running Wednesday's meeting. And we'll make sure that uh, any member of Community Board Five can get a panelist link to make sure they have a seamless and easy way of entry for that meeting. Um, board members will be in the office as, as normal. Uh, but public will be encouraged to join remotely, as well as any other additional members of Community Board Five who can't be in the office. Um, so any other closing remarks, um, Nancy?
Everybody stay cool.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, Da- David, your hand just went up.
Yeah, I, I just, um, I know that this was like, kind of, uh, last, like, uh, I guess there, there's a, we, we did this in advance of a meeting on Wednesday. But I think having a conversation like this, which is very important, and this presentation was very important to do sort of in the middle of the day on a, on a workday is, is, is probably pretty challenging for a lot of folks on this call as well as the public. So I would, I would like to just sort of voice the fact that we would, it would be best if we could do these at um, times that don't, don't interfere or conflict with the workday.
I, I will say that that's my, partially my fault because I could not come to your Wednesday meeting. Um, and, and so, you know, ultimately, your board made accommodations for me. And I apologize for that.
All right. Uh, but David, that's, that's a really valid question, you know, that's, that's a valid concern. And uh, we hear you and we will definitely, you know, look in that going forward for sure. Um, this meeting will be, is recorded um, and is streaming on YouTube and, and will be available for, for any board members that want to take a look. Because this is definitely a very important conversation. Sharon, you, I know you made a comment. I see your hand raised. I just want to give you a quick second or um, otherwise. Sharon, you're permitted to talk if you have an additional comment or question. Otherwise, we're, we're going to adjourn the meeting.
I'm sorry, I, I, I was muted. Can you hear me now? My only question was whether, is there a report uh, that, that I can read that describes what City of Yes is?
So, um, Sharon, the board office, we have, we're gathering some documents. It's a, it's a thirteen hundred page deck, uh, but are some summary documents that uh, the board office is collecting. So we can, if you, if the office has your, um, can get your contact information, we can, we try to get that out to you. Um, and links will also be posted on our website so that everything that's available to the public is, is available. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, well, have a great afternoon. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Bye.